......................................................
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. We're going to switch...
Roll call first.
No, we're just, we're gonna change that. So, we're gonna do the oath of office and then we'll do the roll call with the entire board, okay? So, the new members, join me up here. Judge Arnoni will swear.
So, good evening and welcome here to the school board meeting. I'm Judge Arnoni and I'm honored to do the honor of administering the oath. Members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent, Principal Jan Santi, administrators, teachers, staff, parents and residents of Bethel Park, most importantly, families of these incoming school board members and friends, you have a big task ahead of you and you need your family's support. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you on your recent election and now the hard work is ahead of you and it comes very quickly. So, I just ask that you realize the task that you are stuck with.[155.62][155.62](Laughter). It's an honor, I know, but what we're looking for now is for you to give the encouragement, the enrichment, the education, and looking to protect our children. And it's really an important task. Please make us all proud. Please do the best you can. This is an important job for our community. And again, I know that you guys are up for the task and you have great leadership and I was talking to some of the members earlier about the fact that what a nice mix in demographics. So, thank you all, God bless, and if you would raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the municipality of Bethel Park.
The laws and ordinances of the municipality of Bethel Park.
And all the rules and regulations pertaining to and governing...
And all the laws and regulations pertaining to governing.
The school district of Bethel Park.
The school district of Bethel Park.
As a director...
As a director.
I will faithfully discharge...
I will faithfully discharge.
And perform all the duties of my position...
And perform all the duties of my position.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So, help me, God. Congratulations.[272.25][272.25](Applause). I'm gonna have them, I'm gonna have the new members sign their oaths in front of me and then that will complete my duties and I would just ask that the originals, that may be the superintendent, take in possession and then make copies accordingly for your files and maybe give the originals to the directors.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Vicki, will you send me a copy, please?
You know, why not? Why not?
Do you wanna take one of my copies?
Where is it?
I know, you'll send me.[326.02][326.02](Applause).
Whoever didn't take your name plate, take your name plate and decide where you're gonna sit.
I'm gonna trust you go take care of that. Yes?
Yes.
See my girl, Kim's over here. See how I got across the arm? My hand got out there.
I know. You've got some luck.
There? That's a good one.
So, thank you Judge Arnoni and welcome, new members of the Bethel Park School Board. Moving on to the next item, roll call.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spacusa.
President.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. We need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items, but before we do, are there any items on the agenda that you have in front of you that you'd like held out to be delayed till next week's meeting? Okay. So, then can, we have a motion to a second? Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Ms. Walsh Turner to adopt the agenda items. We have to vote on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have nine on, right? Nine to zero. Are there any public comments? Uh-oh.
Are you both there now? Mrs. Rule? Mrs. Rule? Mr. Spacusa, are you there?
I can hear.
I can hear you, hold on. Sorry. I had him both dropped. They both called in, but the problem is, is he called back in. Russ, are you still there? Mr. Spacusa, are you there?
I'm here.
Yeah, you might have to come over here. I'm not sure why this one's not connecting, though it worked fine, but...
If they called, I'll stay up here for a minute while we're waiting.
Okay. See this right here? I don't know how to do that.
Hello?
I'm here.
I lost it. We're gonna leave you on this one. We're gonna use the other one to dial Ross.
Okay.
412-835. 412-835. Got it down.
Got one.
835.
I like your pool better than that.
835. You got the guy. Yeah. You see the numbers? You're calling. You're calling Russ, sorry.
We're calling here, please.
We got you on a second phone.
Yep. Mrs. Rule, are you here?
I'm here.
All right. Okay, we're good.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments on the agenda items that are listed on the agenda you have in front of you?
Hi, Shayna Willis, 5844 Manonghale Avenue. I want to say welcome to our new board. I'm really happy to have you guys here. The hopes of the district rest on your shoulders, it's a heavy weight to carry. You have a chance tonight to be unified and move forward. I see that there's a president and a vice president on the agenda for tonight and I would love to see Ken and Pam in those roles and that's what I have to say. So, welcome. I know you guys knocked a lot of doors and met a lot of people, a lot of social media posts and, you know, tonight's a great night. Happy to see you here.
Kristy Ammon, 1131 McKnight Drive. Hi. So, six years ago, I started paying attention to our school board mainly because my daughter went into kindergarten. I am impressed with each and every one of you candidates that had made it onto here. I'm looking forward to change that has so desperately been wanted by this community. I see H1 in the election of officers and even though it has been stated by Ken that he would not like the president board, I think that he is the only one that, from the previous board, that has been qualified to take that leadership role. He's ran his campaign on integrity and he has started this movement that got you guys elected to this board. This change has so desperately been needed and I'm looking forward to you guys voting him in as president. Thank you.
Hi, Ron Sustich, 1111 Ryle Drive. Simple question, finance committee, item number four. See, we're gonna waive the facility rental fee for the Zumba class. I'm not a Zumba person, I don't do that, but my only question is, is how the high school two times a week, what are their costs to the district for that person to have that class in our building? Utilities, whatever security you provide. And you don't have to answer the question, but keep that in mind when you're voting on that, 'cause if we lose too many facility fees, then the district is paying for private people and I know that people pay to take that class. So, you know, the district should be entitled to reimbursement for its cost when something happens in the school building. Maybe not the full fee, maybe a reduced fee, but this basically says we're gonna give it to them for free. I don't know that that's proper.
So, I think it's a good discussion item. Can we bring that up for discussion when we get to that point of the agenda? Because what's a little bit different about this meeting is that we didn't have a committee meeting to discuss some of those things beforehand, so, great, great point to bring up. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the next item. I guess it's kind of a moot point because we, we needed to elect a president pro temp to administer the election of the president and vice president. I kind of assumed that because we didn't have a board to vote on that, we didn't have a vice president here, so, a little bit of a catch 22.
Everybody's in the same place, so you just would open it up for nominations for temporary president who will just act until the president and vice president have been elected.
Oh, okay, okay.
I nominate Barry.
I second that.
Thank you. So, all in favor? It has been moved and seconded that I continue to assume the president pro temp position. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, nine to zero. So, since this is the reorganization meeting, this is the time that we will elect a president and vice president to lead the board over the next 12 months. The first item on the agenda is the nomination and the election of the president. So, at this point, we'll open up the floor for nominations for president?
I nominate Pam Dobus for president of the Bethel Park School Board.
Any other nominations?
Do we need a second?
No.
Okay, do we need to...
Motion to close.
A motion to close nominations?
Yes.
Okay.
Congress, if we close the nomination?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the nominations for president of Bethel Park School Board. With that, we need to do a name or is it, if it's one person...
Yeah, there's only one nominee, so unless...
Yeah, so we can do this, just oral vote, so. All in favor of Pam Dobus? Just let me be clear. Listen, this is the last time I'm gonna have this. All in favor of Pam Dobus becoming vice pres, becoming president of the Bethel Park School Board, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, nine to zero. And that means that I'm out of a job now.
My sheet's vacant. Thank you.
(Applause).
I will do my best. So, the next item of business is the vice president, nominations for vice president of the Bethel Park Board of School Directors. I'd like to open the nominations at this time. I personally would like to nominate Ken Nagel for that office. During the two years he's been on the board, he's been a fresh voice for change. He always asks good questions. He has the interests of the students and the community uppermost in his mind and most importantly for me, he organized and facilitated the two public forums that we had where we all heard a groundswell of information that served this whole change in the board. And I'm, I've been honored to serve with him and I would welcome his role as VP, so I nominate Ken. Other nominations?
I would like to nominate Jim Modrak. You're correct, Ken has done a lot and, you know, when I, when I look at this board, I see three very qualified individuals to hold both president and vice president. I think, you know, any other given election year where, you know, PP Ford had a very big following and a very big voter turnout and a blend of, of the experience and someone who got the, the top votes in the community would be a decent blend. That being said, if Ken wins his nomination, I'm perfectly fine with it. I've been friends with him for six and a half, seven years.
Any other nominations? Will someone move that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Barry and seconded by, who seconded that?
Ken.
Ken. That the nominations for vice president be closed? And then we're gonna vote on that, roll call?
Do the candidates want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I'd like to say I've worked very hard over the last three years. I've been very diligent in trying to learn my role as a board member. I have taken countless classes through PSBA. I've worked hard to carry this vision to the community that we all encourage and we've all supported here and the 7,000-plus voters supported that vision. I'd also like to say that as a board member, I think the, the people who have sat on the board know that there's a lot that you don't know coming in, no matter what you presume. And I think it'd be way better served for this community, for this vision, for this message going forward, that the board members coming in who have not served yet, take this opportunity to learn to be board members. When we have so many challenges ahead of us, we have, we're gonna be voting on Mr. Krazee's retirement this evening, Mr. Keith, that's two senior administration officials that we have to look, they're going to be big old stuff. I think we're all in agreement that we need a strategic plan and that's going to be a big task and undertaking. The responsibility of president and vice president is to try to keep the trains running, try to keep things moving forward and try and build consensus among the board as well as among the community. I think that I'm better served in that purpose because I spent two years on the board and understand how the trains do run a little better than people who haven't spent that time yet and I hope that my fellow board members share that vision and that view and share that feeling that the community be better served, that they, in this challenging time, take the time to learn to be board members before they try to assume leadership positions.
Ken is right, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us and I'm not discounting that I'm new to this board, but there's one thing that can't be said, except with Pam. I've been in this community working 30 years, 15 years in this district, know this district inside and out, served this district as a school resource officer, know the staff, know the parents, know the community. And Ken is right about that and with those challenges come with that is that the insight and the knowledge of the staff, of the students, of the community that I bring, I think can overshadow my lack of experiences sitting on a, forming on a board, 'cause I've worked this place for 30 years, 15 years directly with the school district and handled many, many crises in this district. Worked with a lot of people, good people in this community, collaborated for over the years, so, I think that's a big, like Ken said, that's a big vado part, is the fact that as we transition, is the fact that someone who knows and understands this community for many years, two decades. So, thank you for your time in this report.
So, we need a motion to close, or, excuse me, a vote, and you can do a voice move to vote to close nominations and then a roll call vote for...
I think we did close. Were we closed?
Yeah, we voted to close.
Were we closed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, just roll call on the vice president's...
Did we, did we vote on those nominations?
Oh, didn't we? There was a second?
There was a second.
Yeah, I didn't...
Oh, you know, maybe there wasn't.
I think you did.
I thought we did.
Do it again.
It was a roll call, I mean a...
It was just a...
You closed it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
No, you closed on the individual. What's...
Right.
So, roll call.
Mr. Christensen.
Jim Modrak.
Mrs. Dobus.
Ken Nagel.
Mr. McGregor.
Jim Modrak.
Mr. Modrak?
Jim Modrak.
Mr. Nagel?
I'll go with Ken Nagel.
Good choice.
Mrs. Rule?
Jim Modrak.
Mr. Scalzo?
Jim Modrak.
Mr. Spacusa? Mr. Spacusa? You there?
Russ?
Is that Jim Modrak?
Mrs. Turner? Yep, got it.
Jim Modrak.
Seven to two.
Thank you.[840.16][840.16](Applause).
Okay, moving on to the business items for this meeting, we'll, we have some discussion and some board comments later on. The personnel committee, Barry, will you take that, please?
Yes. On the personnel committee tonight, there are three items. Number one, the approval of extra duty responsibility programs, acceptance of resignations and Mr. Krazee is one of those honored guests, and the appointment of personnel. Would anybody like any of these held out? Okay, seen none? Can I have a motion to, to approve these? I made, can I have a second? Sorry, I made the motion.
Second.
I just had one comment. Like I said last month, with regards to Mr. Keith, I just, you know, it won't go on forever, but needless to say, you know, Mr. Krazee is an unbelievable business manager, someone that you could trust, somebody that you could rely on with relentless work ethic, somebody that's donated a ton of time to the district and has really, you know, grown in his position as far as it's grown. There's a lot there for him to do. He's never wavered from those challenges. He's done an excellent job on the fiscal end, the human resources end, safe to say and so on and so forth. And just want to say that he'll be greatly missed and again, you can't really replace these guys very easily or at all, so, I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done in my time being here, for sure. You've been a loyal worker, friend and person to the entire school system, so I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.[870.16][870.16](Applause).
So, it's been moved and seconded now, the three items underneath personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries nine to zero. Facilities and services committee, Ken, will you take that, please?
Yes, there is one item under facilities and services, high school crap resurfacing. If anybody would like to discuss that, actually, we could be able to talk a little bit about...
So, we normally first and second and then we talk about it?
Yes, okay. I move the...
Heard a ground swell of information that serves this whole change in the board. And I'm, I've been honored to serve with him and I would welcome his role as VP. So I nominate Ken. Other nominations?
I would like to nominate Jim Modrick. You're correct, Ken has done a lot. And, you know, when I, when I look at this board, I see three very qualified individuals to hold both President and Vice President. I think, you know, any other given election year where, you know, PP Ford had a very big following and a very big voter turnout and a blend of, of the experience and someone who got the, the top votes and the community would be a decent blend. That being said, if, if Ken wins his nomination, I'm perfectly fine with it. I've been friends with him for six and a half, seven years.
Any other nominations? Will someone move that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Barry and seconded by, who seconded that?
Ken.
Ken, that the nominations for Vice President be closed? And then we're going to vote on that roll call?
Do the candidates want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I'd like to say I've worked very hard over the last three years. I've been very diligent in trying to learn my role as a board member. I have taken countless classes through PSBA. I've worked hard to carry this vision to the community that we all encourage and we, we've all supported here and the 7,000-plus voters supported that vision. I'd also like to say that as a board member, I think the, the people who have sat on the board know that there's a lot that you don't know coming in, no matter what you presume. And I think it'd be way better served for this community, for this vision, for this message going forward, that the board members coming in who have not served yet, take this opportunity to learn to be board members. When we have so many challenges ahead of us, we have, we're going to be voting on Mr. Karazey's retirement this evening, Mr. Keith, that's two senior administration officials that we have to look, they're going to be big old citizens. I think we're all in agreement that we need a strategic plan and that's going to be a big task and undertaking. The responsibility of President and Vice President is to try to keep the trains running, try to keep things moving forward and try and build consensus among the board as well as among the community. I think that I'm better served in that purpose because I spent two years on the board and understand how the trains do run a little better than people who haven't spent that time yet. And I hope that my fellow board members share that vision and that view and share that feeling that, that the community be better served, that they, in this challenging time, take the time to learn to be board members before they try to assume leadership
Ken is right, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us and I'm not discounting that I'm new to this board, but there's one thing that can't be said, except with Pam. I've been in this community working 30 years, 15 years in this district, know this district inside and out, served this district as a school resource officer, know the staff, know the parents, know the community. And Ken is right about that. And with those challenges come with that is that the insight and the knowledge of the staff, of the students, of the community that I bring, I think can overshadow my lack of experiences sitting on a, on a forum on a board. Because I've worked this place for 30 years, 15 years directly with this school district and handled many, many crises in this district. Worked with a lot of people, good people in this community, collaborated for over the years. So I think that's a big, like Ken said, that's a big vado part, is the fact that as we transition, is the fact that someone who knows and understands this community for many years, two decades. Thank you for your time and your support.
So we need a motion to close, or excuse me, a vote, and you can do a voice move to vote to close nominations and then a roll call vote for Vice President.
I think we did close.
Yeah, we voted to close.
Just vote on those?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So just roll call on Vice President.
Did we, did we vote on those nominations?
Oh, didn't we? There was a second.
There was a second.
Yeah, I didn't.
Oh, you know, maybe there wasn't.
I think you did.
I thought we did.
Do it again.
It was a roll call, I mean a.
It was just.
You closed it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
No, you go on the individual.
Right.
One.
So roll call.
Mr. Christensen.
Jim Modrick.
Mrs. Dobus.
Ken Nagel.
Mr. McGregor.
Jim Modrick.
Mr. Modrick.
Uh, Jim Modrick.
Ken Nagel.
I'll go with Ken Nagel.
Good choice.
Mrs. Rule.
Jim Modrick.
Mr. Scalzo.
Jim Modrick.
Mr. Spacusa. Mr. Spacusa. You there?
Russ.
Is that Jim Modrick?
Mrs. Turner. Yep, got it.
Jim Modrick.
Seven to two.
Okay, moving on to the business items for this meeting, we'll, we have some discussion and some board comments later on. The Personnel Committee, Barry, will you take that, please?
Yes. On the Personnel Committee tonight, there are three items. Number one, the approval of extra duty responsibility programs, acceptance of resignations, and Mr. Karazey is one of those honored guests. And the appointment of personnel. Would anybody like any of these held out? Okay, seen none. Can I have a motion to, to approve these? I made, can I have a second? Sorry, I made the motion.
A second. I just had one comment. Like I said last month, with regards to Mr. Keith, I just, you know, it won't go on forever, but needless to say, you know, Mr. Karazey is an unbelievable business manager, someone that you could trust, somebody that you could rely on with relentless work ethic, somebody that's donated a ton of time to the district and has really, you know, grown in his position as far as it's grown. There's a lot there for him to do. He's never wavered from those challenges. He's done an excellent job on the fiscal end, the human resources end, safe to say, and so on and so forth. And just want to say that he'll be greatly missed and again, you can't really replace these guys very easily or at all. So I, I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done in my time being here, for sure. You've been a loyal worker, friend and person to the entire school system, so I can't thank you enough.
So it's been moved and seconded now, the three items underneath Personnel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries nine to zero. Facilities and Services Committee, Ken, will you take that, please?
Yes, there is one item under Facilities and Services, high school track resurfacing. If anybody would like to discuss that, actually, we could be able to talk a little bit about it.
We normally first and second, and then we talk about it.
Okay. I move that we pass number one, high school track resurfacing.
Second.
I had a couple of comments. So with regards to, you know, we got recommendations from, and we've clarified this before, Nagel was the company, not related to you, Mr. Nagel.
Not even spelled the same way.
But, so I'm just, when I say that, that's who I'm referring to. Obviously, our track is going to be in need of resurfacing. We also had some discussion in and around the fact that there is some water that is running underneath the field and that that pipe on the edge of the track is leaking. This motion that you're approving doesn't necessarily address that issue, which I've publicly said before, that's something we would be looking on getting prices for probably or bidding out in January or, you know, February, in which case we would be looking to try to have that water capped at the edge line of the field and ran all the way around. It would be slightly more expensive, but from the meetings that we've had, both with Facilities and Administration, we feel that would be the safest bet. And in that, then we would guarantee when we resurface the track, that there wouldn't be water leaking underneath of it. The price that you're seeing here, which option number one for the 251,709 not to exceed, would probably come down a little bit if we try, if we end up deciding to go with the other, with the other job working it around, because that cost of the job, we don't know exactly what that would be, but it may be in the ballpark of, well, I don't want to say what exactly it'd be. It'd probably be much more expensive than $5,000 or $6,000, probably be in the ballpark of $40,000 to $60,000 or better. But I, I say that because if you choose to do that, then this price of 251,709 may come down by $5,000 or $6,000, because the actual repair of that pipe would come off of that. But if you voted to not exceed that amount, then in case you decided that you didn't want to run the water all the way around, then this would include the fixing of that pipe. The other option that was available that we listed for your consideration is to basically redo the entire track down to the base. As you may recall from previous meetings, we had engineers come in and do a test boring. It is their opinion that we do not need to do that option where we take it all the way down, that we, the $564,429 option, that we would be okay based upon the borings that the professionals did to do, the 251,709. So the general idea of this, we're asking you to, we're recommending that you do this because we want to obviously get on the schedule for this job to be done over the summer, right after track season, but a lot of people will want their tracks done right after track season. We want to make sure that we're aligned. So that's the general concept of it. The other piece of the job where we'd be running the water would be in future months. That's something for you to consider. So that's our recommendation.
What's the, what's the typical lifespan of a track? And how does that, how do these two options affect what we'd expect as the typical lifespan?
I really don't know the typical lifespan of the track, but what I've just read on it, it's about 12 years to 20 years, depending on how you maintain it. And obviously, the water, it, it, right now is probably giving us some problems and obviously our board testing come back and we have some problems, but we've been recommended not to replace, but just to resurface.
Okay.
The current track was put in in '06.
In '06, yes.
It was?
'06.
Okay.
Now, will the resurface and the base is good?
The base is good.
Shorten the lifespan or will it be the same?
Yeah, that's what they said, the base is good.
That I'd have to talk to the contractors with, and I haven't, we haven't talked, I haven't spoken to the contractors on that, but I would hope to at least extend the life of it somewhat. It wouldn't be, maybe it would be the whole 20 years, but obviously, we're, we're going to maybe extend that for 10 years, depending on what the contractors tell us and what their warranty would be. Mr. Keith? So, and I'm sorry, I asked Buzzie, as he said about '06, but the question I had and Buzzie answered, I'd like to see, to confirm with you, is that the base is good? Yes. So that, that is not the issue. The issue is the track surface itself. At one point in time, we'll have a replacement. Of the track at some point. Of the track itself, because it only has a certain amount of years' life. But right now, based on the professionals, they recommend us to take the, the first option for 200-plus thousand dollars. Very good.
And that's why we had the, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
That's why we had the borings done, as you may remember, because we wanted professionals to check that base, because the last thing you'd want to do is go with that option and then have a bad base. But I think the last point we're trying to make is when the field moved, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when the field moved to turf, you know, from grass, this pipe that's underneath there, I just really think it's, it's our recommendation that we go all the way out and around. That's going to be a little more costly, but for the turf and the track expense that you have there, I think it's going to be in your best interest to, to go around.
Question, so everything was replaced in 2006, meaning the asphalt on the bottom and the turf?
It was a brand-new track, yes.
So we're looking at a 13-year-old track?
Yes.
We're saying that the undercor should last 20 years, so we're going to be pushing, if we do it, we resurface and we're out 12 more years on a resurface because this one lasted 12.
I have to check with the contractor to see what he would say, but I'm, I'm, I'm making an estimated guess of about 12 years just to resurface. We should have an extension of that.
Okay, so the asphalt underneath then would be 24 years old and at that point in time would need to be redone all the way.
Right. But based again, with the, with the contractors have looked at it, right now, they're saying that the, the people that did the earth testing on it said that we're in good shape.
Okay.
Okay? And that water is turned off at this point?
The water is off. Every winter.
So, so my, so I just want to understand this. So we have a leak, and so what we're going to do with this particular recommendation is we're going to fix the leak and resurface it, and then later, if we need to take the pipe around, we'll get another estimate for that.
Well, good.
Is that, is that, am I correct in that?
Yeah, so the, the idea, right, is that this price would include fixing the leak. However, we are going to say not to exceed because the reality is we're going to recommend a more, a more expensive permanent fix to run the water all the way around the next couple of months. We assume, and I think it's a fair assumption, that the, the number of 251,709 will come down by a little, not a ton, because you're not going to be fixing that pipe then because we're going to shut it off where it is and run it all the way around. So the total cost of the job, if you added both together, is going to be more than 251. But this particular one, if you leave it at 251,709 and you decide as an example, well, I'm not, I'm no longer, I don't want to do the option of running it all around, it's too costly, then we'd already have the approval to at least fix what was there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Now, will water be turned back on in April for, for track season?
Yes, we turned it on this year, too, yes.
So we're going to continue having those issues with, with the water problems on the track?
That's always a possibility. This is the first failure. We, we did a lot of things in the last four years to make sure that it would not happen, but it did happen on the one spot. Okay?
So it's a very slow, very slow leak, but it's something that you want to address and you don't want it moving this way in farther into the track and the field, you're going to want it to go out and grow. That's my recommendation.
ours.
Any more questions? Any more comments? So on the blank in the motion, the number 251,709 should go in there? It's been moved by Ken and seconded by Barry, so at this time, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
You're, aye, aye, Russ or Nag? Aye, okay. The motion passes nine to zero. Our next committee is the Finance Committee. Barry, will you take that at this time?
Sure. On the Finance Committee tonight, we have eight items. Would anybody like any of these held out?
I think we shouldn't hold out the, waive the rental fees, facility rental fees until we can at least discuss in executive committee and come back to that.
So number four.
So you would like that tabled for next week?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that at this point, or?
So what the next motion could be to approve items one through eight, leaving out four.
Okay, and then five, oh, sorry, four.
One through eight, leaving out four.
Yeah, and then we'll vote to postpone, to table, okay, perfect.
Just a point of order, is this something that we should be discussing in executive committee or in public?
So I'm glad you brought that up because specifically, if this is just about the facility rental fee, it's not an executive session topic, so you should do that in public. And again, you haven't had a workshop meeting, so I understand that it's a little bit off sequence. So one option would be that you guys approve en masse, one through eight, except for four.
And they have discussion?
Yeah, discuss four and then put four.
Then we could decide to table or to vote on it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other items to be held out? Okay, seen no more. I move to adopt, under the Finance Committee, the budgetary transfers, the AIU Joint Purchasing Board, E-Rate Consultant, reduction of facility rental fees, approval of student services contracts, adopt the 2021 proposed preliminary general fund budget, and item declared, and items declared unused and unnecessary.
Need a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Barry and seconded by Jim Modrick. All in favor of one through?
Three and five through.
Eight, leaving out four.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any unopposed? Okay, motion carries nine to zero, which is a relief for Buzzie, so he can now do the budget work that needs to be started.
So with item number four, before we decide to either table this or take a vote, can we have some discussion around what, what, what it is, what the drivers are for this?
So a little background information, we restructured a little while back our, you know, facility usage and then other, if you don't follow the facility usage price that Mr. Karazey and I and the board eventually approved, then it has to come to the board to be waived. That's just, that's what we do. So any request where we're not going to charge somebody what we typically would charge, we, we do that. So in this case, the general idea that I have, it's been happening for some time, however, you know, there are staff members who utilize the facility and have somebody come in to, you know, conduct this, this exercise a couple of times. As far as, I mean, I think the question was, you know, how much, from the public was, how much does this cost us, or so on and so forth? I think in large part, you know, the point is, the point is taken in such that if you did it for everyone eventually, it would, it would, it could end up costing quite a bit because you'd have to clean up for a few people, but a few different groups and you wouldn't be getting anything and it would, could take away from the custodial time. But in large part, I think in this case, I think they're just using space, you know, if, if we charged them, they would get charged more by the individual. I think as far as the health and wellness goes, I think it's something that I, I felt okay recommending to you to say, in this case, it's our staff members and I don't, I don't think that it would hurt to not raise the fees for them. I agree with it. I mean, the lights are already on, correct? Yep. So. So that's my opinion on it. I think at some point, if you started to get into overtime or something like that, then, then that would be another, that would be another thing. The only thing you have to concern yourself with is, is that everyone, if everyone started to want to use the facilities, then you'd be faced with that decision. And I don't know how that, you know, would work for a variety of different activities. Obviously, students and those things are going to take priority, but then after that, can the space be used and are you going to want to waive that? I think one big thing here that we do have is the individual, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is the individual is receiving some payment. So that's the only thing to consider.
So we adopted a policy last year, a couple of years ago, where I, I don't have the policy in front of me, but if it was for charity, there is some criteria that says we wouldn't charge for it. But in this case, since, you know, we, there is money being collected and at the same time, you know, we charge our student groups to host things like the debate club, you know, I know they, you know, we, we charge them, because I, I heard about that. And does this really mean that we should reevaluate this whole rental fee policy? Because to me, it's hard to approve this when we're turning around and charging our student organizations to use the facilities also.
So that's kind of what we were, we were faced with when, when we kind of became aware of it, that, but I think it's been happening for quite some time, the way I understand it. But yes, that is, that is the issue and that's why it comes to you if, if we're not going to follow it. Otherwise, if we were going to follow it, there'd be some charge for the use of space. And we could continue to do that. I just felt this was something that you would at least want to hear about and make the decision on, because I know it's been happening for a while and people would be disappointed.
Is there the ability to go pull that policy and review it for next week?
We, sure, I mean, we could review the policy, but in general, it's going to say that if you fall into one of these groups and we have it listed, this is the payment that you have to pay and the only way that you could be waived, that could be waived is by the board. Even the charity ones, when it goes all to charity, not fundraising, we still usually put those on the board agenda and the board votes on that to, to waive the fee. And most of the time that it's been waived in the past, it's been waived because it was for, you know, a donation to, example, you know, a cancer society, something like that, where all the funds were going for that. We typically, we set another parameter, and I don't have the exact cost on it, for folks that are fundraising for groups, it's less than if you were coming from the outside, but not free. So if you ran, example, basketball volleyball tournament and you were fundraising and making dollars all weekend, then, and there was custodial overtime, there was some payment for that. So to your point, I don't believe there's any overtime on this that I'm aware of, although you could, you know, so I.
I, I think that's a good idea to review the policy. I don't know if it could be done as quickly as that, but I think that should be something that we put on our list of things to do. For this particular instance, though, I don't think it costs the district any money because it was going on when I was still a teacher. It happens right after school and only teachers benefit, so it's part of their wellness to do it. I understand they're paying some money to her to instruct it, but I think that we should approve it at this juncture and look at the policy in the future, because it's a, it's important to the people who are taking it and it helps to keep them healthy.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I would be fine with that. I, I would like to look at the policy because I think, I've heard about a number of cases where we're charging student organizations.
Right.
You know, sometimes they'll run some small events and this is their primary fundraiser for the year and they end up giving it all back to the district to cover the rental.
And that's, you know, something that you'd have to decide, if that's something that you want to start waiving again, that's not what we did now. But I mean, I just want to be consistent where, you know, what we had happen a couple of times, for example, and that's why we kind of set this parameter, was one group was getting it waived because the policy was saying you could request by the superintendent or there doesn't need to have it waived, and then somebody was saying to me, well, it got waived for Club A or PTO A, but not B, and I didn't find that. My personal opinion is whatever you do, my recommendation would be that it should be consistent. So if you're going to just say, which I'm perfectly fine with, that clubs are going to be having fun, or boosters or whatever are going to be having fundraisers, PTOs, and you want to waive all those costs, I just think that should be consistent, but then you're going to have overtime. The other thing we really talked a lot about, too, was trying to encourage folks to have it during times where there was not overtime, when possible. And that really helped, too. But, I mean, that, my only recommendation to you on that is I could see the point of not having students pay for that, because it takes away from what they're earning, but in the same idea, then we have to be prepared to cover that from the district, which personally, I'm okay with, as long as you understand that that is, you know, that's a cost. Our facilities are used constantly, which is good, in my opinion, but.
Any more discussion on this item? Would anyone like to move it?
I move that we waive the facility rental fees.
Okay, second. It's been moved by Barry and seconded by Darren. It's been moved by Barry and seconded by Darren. Was it, was that second wrong? Was it Ken? I'm sorry, Ken.
He would have seconded it if I didn't.
Okay, Barry and Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Okay, other, Kim, do you want to take other?
Other is the naming of newspapers for advertising, the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, the Observer Reporter, and the Almanac. To approve the naming of newspapers.
Second?
Second.
Barry? Okay, Kim made the motion and Barry seconded it. All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Okay, at this time, because this is our first meeting and there are lots of ideas out there, particularly for items that we want to include on agendas in the future, or items that we want to discuss, I'd like to open up this next time period for general board discussion, for ideas to be considered for the future and/or for agenda items next week or in the future. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go down and start with Darren there, if you have any items, and we'll just move on, on through.
Well, one of, one of the things I would like to see is reforming the board meetings. You know, I would like to see public comments at the beginning of meetings. So that's what I would like to see, if that's possible.
Sure, I mean, so you're required, under the Sunshine Act, to have an opportunity for public comment. Typically, and again, you, you're right, you can sort of decide how you want to design it in terms of whether, obviously, agenda items, the public has to have an opportunity to comment on those before they're voted on. You know, lots of places will put other generalized public comment at the end, but board's free to structure it however they like.
Yeah, to me, it makes, I've been here at, at board meetings when public comments haven't started until 10 o'clock, you know, and, and people have families and they need to get their kids to bed. They could come and make their comments at the beginning, and if they can't wait around, they could, they could leave and just watch it on YouTube a few days later. So I, I think that's more community friendly, where, you know, speak your piece and then you could take off and go read a bedtime story to your kid.
Can public comments be made before each item, like the finance item? Could there be public comments then, or do, or do they have to be at one end or the other? Can they be made during the meeting in a sense?
You could. I mean, it, it might kind of break up the flow of the meeting, but I don't think there's any legal prohibition against, if you wanted to have public comment for, for example, your personnel items and then your finance items, probably structure that way.
Any other input about that idea of reformatting the board meetings, other ideas that you would like to put out there?
I have seen other board meetings in other districts where they give public comments on agenda items before each committee, way to allows the people in the public to comment on items while, right before they're voted on, as opposed to sometimes a half an hour, an hour before we even get to that item. And I think there's some value in that, as far as public comments on the agenda items.
Okay, other, other interest in how to reformat the meetings, any other?
Another start time.
Okay.
There's been multiple conversations regards to that eight o'clock start time. I know, and as Darren just alluded, sometimes these meetings ain't getting over on Hot Topic, 11, 11:30, and I don't think that's fair to everybody. If it's something we can discuss and get feedback from the community, that we look at maybe even starting the meetings at an earlier time, seven, 7:30, whatever it may be.
I think seven o'clock is a pretty common start time.
Yeah.
For board meetings.
So the general board meeting's starting at possibly seven and executive board an hour before that, as usual?
Yes.
Okay. Other ideas about ways to change the board meeting agendas?
I don't know how difficult it would be, but if the board was emailed or included in the back of the Good News Report, so that the public could get started on that while we're in executive committee, and so prolong the extra time. That way, we can still be abreast of what's going on in the district, but it's not taking up entirely quite often, shorten the meetings and give people room.
Could, would it be possible for the three of you over there who create that Good News Report for us to have it taped and sent out and then started before we come to our general meeting, so that the public would be aware of that?
I understand what you mean by sent out.
If it's, email to us, email to the board members, so we wouldn't miss it. We would know everything that was, was included beforehand and then start it for the general public 15 minutes before we start the meeting.
So in essence, then it would kind of come before the meeting?
Correct.
The meeting doesn't start until you guys come out.
Correct.
It'd be the pregame show.
It's sort of the pre-show, like the Good News. Well, think about it.
It just makes sense if we just had it running like this report, um, beforehand, if you would know, no narration at all, because the slides kind of say anything.
Yes.
I think that's good.
That's a good idea too. Mm-hmm.
But if possible, I'd like the slides still to be shared with us, so we can stay abreast.
I'm sure. That's the easiest.
And obviously, if there's anything that would be important for us to discuss or to know, that's other than just what's on that loop, we would.
I actually have already done for next week, so usually we start it.
We haven't made any decisions on this, this is discussion still.
Are you letting us?
Other, other interests in, in what, the way we, we change the meetings, any other discussions about that? I know I've heard something about a consent agenda.
Yes, sorry. That was the other topic of consent agenda. It would put a little more pressure on some staff members to get it out to the public, but there would be an agenda item like tonight, where there were a lot of things that we all agreed on, they would all be voted on at once. However, prior to the, us voting, if there was an agenda item that the community wanted to speak about, that could be pulled out. But we wouldn't have to do committee by committee, it can be done as a group, so that the discussion items that needed to be had could be done.
Can you comment on that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. And we have plans to do that, where essentially, instead of, for example, tonight, the board looked at each particular item and asked whether there was anything to pull out, and just look at the entire agenda and say, is there anything anyone wants to pull out? If not, then you move Agenda one through five and public meetings go pretty quick. But then we'd have to hold, you hold all the public comments, at least on the agenda items, before you kind of move that consent agenda. And then obviously, you'd have to decide what you want to do with your, you know, your miscellaneous non-agenda related public comments.
But they would still be moved in the regular form that they were currently moving in for discussion purposes, but it would group a lot of things that, unless the public had a comment on, could be moved quickly.
With that said, one of the things that I've had a concern with as a member of the audience is the agenda that they get obviously isn't the same as ours, but the agenda that they get is very opaque. If we're going to do the consent agenda, is, well, regardless of whether we are going to go forward with the consent, consent agenda, I'd like more transparency in the agendas that the audience gets, the citizens get. Is there a way to share more? Particularly, I see a lot of, like, personnel. We say we're going to move 21 positions under change of assignment on their agenda, but we see the positions and the names on ours. I understand personnel reasons, we don't want to share those names, but I think it would be important for the public, if they want to hold something, I'd actually know what we're voting on, you know, as far as the positions.
So are you talking more like a Google Doc that the community can have access to, like, as we're going through?
No, I'm talking more like just the agenda itself, under a lot of these items, looking at their agenda than it is our agenda.
But that, that could be a solution, is that maybe it's a Google document with an appendix.
So if we're an executive committee and we change something on the agenda on the Google Doc, they see it immediately.
Maybe that's something we'd look at, that the administrative team could look at as a way to keep their agenda, have fewer copies, make it more real time, so that.
Sure. One practice that I know that's in place several places, if there are blanks on the agenda, personnel items, at the time the agenda goes out, when the board's ready to vote on those, they say, all right, here are the names that we're going to plug in to all those items. And then, again, if you want to reserve some opportunity for people to make public comment after you've put those names in, you can always reserve that, so that you've essentially given administration what they need as far as having the flexibility to put the names in there prior to your vote, but also giving the public the opportunity to know exactly who's going into those positions. If that's, if that's how you want to do it, we can certainly do it that way.
So Ron, is it possible, instead of having so many print copies of the agenda for the audience to create the Google Doc, document, so that people in the audience could actually bring their phones or their laptops and access the agenda that way?
The agenda can be shared publicly to anybody with a link.
And we can provide that link?
Sure, we can send that link out, we can post it on the website.
Posting on the website, I think, would be.
You put it up there.
Yeah.
And so, and so then, they could hook into the Wi-Fi, that it's in this, the guest Wi-Fi in the room in order to get to that?
We're going to have everybody connected to Wi-Fi, we want to beep, beep up a little bit in there, because it wasn't intended for body inspection, then we'll be artificial.
Okay. Well, as we're talk, talking about this, think about it, ways to do that.
Couple of things to think about on that, just for your information.
Sure.
The original board agenda is shared on Fridays, just so you know. So often, there are changes and modifications or things added, clear up through. So to your point, it would be fluid, but I think that would be something that you'd want to make sure that, you know, people understood, we could put something on there and then it gets taken off for a variety of reasons, like we'll put something on there as a placeholder. That, some of that could be internal things that we can change and not put anything on there till we're sure. For example, if you were waiting on three bids for something and you only have two, sometime we'll put a placeholder and then pull it off, do you see what I'm saying? Well, we just won't put it on. Something like that. Those are some internal things, but it will be a fluid document, that's something that, if that is the case, people have to understand, because if they look at it on a Friday, is the, is the example, by Monday or Tuesday, things could change. So that's, that's just one thing. Hard copy.
That could be something that is at the top of the document, right? This could change.
It can, whatever you.
Put a timestamp on it.
Timestamp, yeah. When it was changed or something. What were you going to say? I interrupted you, hard copy, you said.
Well, if you want hard copies, oftentimes the staff that, you know, makes the hard copies makes it a few hours before here, because we're, we're back there.
I think we'd have to still have a couple of hard copies.
And we'd have to understand that if you made a change, as an example, back there or somewhere, they may not be 100% after it.
Okay, those are lots of good ideas and now we can make some decisions on that, possibly at the next meeting, as part of the agenda for the next meeting, then we'd want to put on reformatting board meetings.
So you want us to basically try to, oh, as a discussion item only, or do you want us to try to make motions out of about the three or four things you said here? Which way? I don't, I don't know, for example, maybe that's in the, for the solicitor.
Would that have to be a motion?
See, I mean, I think generally, you know, that's, that's part of your internal board operating procedure, so, you know, to some degree, I'm not, I mean, I would, so the start time issue, that's going to be part of a motion, because that's going to be part of your establishing your meeting schedule. Their reformatting with the public comments, I think you probably, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to check your board policies, because you may have an existing policy that impacts this, but I think probably you could just direct that you want to reformat your agenda without necessarily, as far as the public comment piece goes, without necessarily having to make that part of a motion. You can send a agenda thing out, I'm just going to take a look at it, but, but certainly I can get you an answer on that pretty quickly.
Okay, so it's, it seems as if some of the things we're still going to have to discuss and find out some information about for our next meeting next week.
So he'll, if he says, if the solicitor gets back to us and says, any of these things need to be motions, we'll make them motions?
Yes. That would be great. Thank you. Okay, Ken, anything you want to put up for general discussion?
Well, one thing is I would like to change the standing procedure to, if any board member requests information, there, it takes five votes to prohibit them from gathering that information, not five votes to gather that information. That's one thing. I don't think any board member should be, have information withheld from them as a standing policy or procedure. Another thing that I've pushed for, for a long time, is putting together a team to start film, start forming facilities, planning curriculums, plans, all as part of a bigger strategic plan. We need, I think, to do that sooner rather than later. Obviously, we have a lot of budget decisions that we have to make sooner rather than later and we have to get a handle on that.
Before you go further, I've, I've spoken to some people at the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, and they are able to facilitate a retreat for the school board members in order to start to work on a strategic plan or goals and so forth. And I was wondering if everyone would be interested in something like that and is that something that's a public meeting, if we have a goal-setting meeting, or is that an executive?
Do you mean, in the context of like a strategic plan retreat?
Yes.
It's educational.
Yeah, it's, it's receiving information and training, so that's not a public meeting context.
Even if we are trying to create goals for ourselves, that's.
Well, if you deliberate, then, then it could become a public meeting, but I, the PSBA, they're used to holding their. See, yeah, they, they hold them in, in a retreat setting for lots of school boards, so they know how to do that to make sure that you're going to stay with one essential one.
Okay, all right. And everyone?
I'd be interested in looking at the cost and what.
Cost of what they would do that for.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, that's, that's my number one thing that I think we need to work on as a team to, 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 you know, build the teamwork with a lot of new members on the board, but also, the strategic plan is critical for us to manage ourselves, manage the priorities going forward. And I think for next week, I'd even like to see maybe authorizing, if, if, did they give you a ballpark cost for that retreat?
No, I didn't ask for a cost, but I can, I can look at it.
You know, maybe even approving that expense, because this is something that I would say, you know, middle of January, we should, you know, be starting this and, you know, how I would see.
You're not thinking of going to like Costa Rica or something, right?
Puerto Rico, isn't that where the, the Pittsburgh Superintendent took his group?
We're, we're just looking to have it in this room or something, right?
Yeah.
In terms of cost.
But the, but yeah, I think, you know, this is, this is critical to, to build the teamwork of the board and to focus on what are the things, you know, what, you know, remind ourselves, or if we have to modify, you know, the vision, mission, core values, you know, the how we go about, you know, executing that plan, and also identifying, what are those five to six things that are our strategic objectives that we need to form committees around, that we need to get more input from the community, from the staff, administration, to move those strategic objectives forward? And then, you know, how do we finance those? So what I would say, and this kind of goes back to the question you had about, is this public or, or, or executive session, is, I think the first one, you know, you, you can only do this with a, the group can't be 100 people, otherwise you get nothing done, but you, you know, I would say that we'd come up with a proposal, float that by, you know, the community, every, all the stakeholders involved, and then continue to evolve that.
I think that's where we need to get community involvement.
I think that's where we need to get community involvement. Several years ago, and I know that the communities, the municipality has done it. A 360 survey is something that this community has done and really thrived upon in fixing our parks and fixing our recreational areas for our kids. I think a 360 survey is what we need to look at next, but we need to include students, we need to include staff, and we need to include community and parents and stakeholders in all of that. And we need to find out how much that's going to cost, who could do it, and how it can be done efficiently and in a manner that will start to make an impact, if not at the end of this school year, definitely by the beginning of next school year.
Yeah. I agree. A 360 survey is essential. I think that, from a timing standpoint, it probably happens sometime after you come up with a, yeah, that you come up with a draft for what your strategic plan looks like, because that workshop and circulating the idea of, you know, what our strategic priorities are, help us shape the questions that would go into a survey like that. But I think it's essential to establish a baseline of where we're at today and, and to help us set goals where we're going.
And that would also give us a really good look at, and especially from this, and teachers and administration in each building, that would give us a good handle to on the facilities aspects.
Ken, were you finished with your comments?
No, I still have a few.
Okay.
Sorry.
How did I not know that?
Well, you mentioned the PSBA. As I've mentioned several times, I've taken a lot of the online courses, I've found a lot of value. As I'm coming to the end of the free courses online through our membership level we have now, I'd like to investigate the all-access membership and what it costs if the other board members, as new board members, are interested in taking some of these courses and using them to help them learn their roles and responsibilities as board members in various different things that we have to look to. You know, I know everybody has some expertise in education up here besides me and Barry, but some expertise in having the well-rounded views of how our role as a board member are two different things. I'd encourage you guys to take what you can, I'd like to look into, to the all-access.
Yeah, when I was talking to the PSBA, I believe we are at a certain level right now, and it's less than 2,000 for us to become all-access, but we would have to take a look at that also.
So, so the last big thing that I ran on originally that I fought for, that I've tried to encourage is community input, staff input, creating avenues that don't, don't circumvent the chain of command, which as a veteran, I understand the crucial role of chain of command in any organization. But allow the input and allow the, the feedback from deeper throughout that chain. One of the things that has been very beneficial, I think, has been the town hall that we've had in the last two summers. I'd like to look at maybe making that as a formal board procedure, once or twice a year where we all meet, and we don't meet to deliberate, we don't meet to, to make decisions, we meet to listen. I don't think the board meetings really facilitate us listening when we give the audience two minutes to address all other concerns. I'd like to see that maybe put in as a policy or a procedure of the board going forward.
You mentioned community input, staff input also, so are you looking for these forums to be open to community only? Or community and staff, or...
Whoever wants to speak to us and give us their input, I think the more input we get before we make decisions, the better informed decisions we can make.
Anything? Is that all?
That's the problem I had, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Kim, other than what you were talking about a few minutes ago with the 360 survey and those kinds of things, do you have some other ideas?
I don't know if this goes into executive session or not, but opening the process for a board solicitor.
I think that does go into executive session, okay.
Then the other one I would have would go into executive session also.
Is, okay. All right. That's, that's all?
Yeah, 'cause everybody already talked about the seven o'clock start, I talked about the 360 survey, the new format for the agenda.
Okay. And Barry, other than your focus on strategic plan and so forth, is there anything else you wanna...
No, that, you know, for me, you know, a number one priority is a number one priority, and that's mine. I think that's the one that we have to spend a lot of time on, you know, you know, bonding as a team, but also, you know, listening and making sure we understand what the priorities are across the community. With, you know, with, with where we're at, with budget, with, you know, a lot of things, we went through this election cycle, a lot of requests we received for things that need to be done differently. I can guarantee you, it's probably three to four times what we can afford in the budget, and it's just important to make sure that we, we have a, have a framework for prioritizing what we're gonna do and, and a timeline for doing that.
Connie, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, so right now, we're just in general board discuss, discussion about things that you're interested in pursuing in the future. We were wondering what your ideas are.
Well, there's a lot of things I would love to look at, and one I do like particularly, if I do, is the reason you have to have all representation of all of your stakeholders, not living in a, like, school board with a 365 survey. You know, it has its own, so there's a lot of people that have already done these things, that have done well. And I think that we need to not reinvent the wheel to different models, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So I do agree with all that. I would say there's maybe changes somewhere that the way the comments are done at the, at the meeting, because I know I've been on a couple of boards where he's worked on it too, and it doesn't slow, you know, easier, faster. So I do like to increase the, of those types of things. So I agree with that. And I know about the solicitor now, do we have anything, well, I know we can't talk about it out there, but I guess when we talk about the back room, we want to talk about the daily, all the professional, how, because we've been through it a couple of times, on how that works, and, you know, the rest to go on.
We'll, 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 we'll call you from the back room.
Can I?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. Russ? Russ?
Here.
Yeah, we can hear you. So we're talking about things that you're interested in looking out in the future, discussion items, agenda items, future plans, and we're wondering what your, what you would like to put forward. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. So what I heard you say, I think, is you are interested in the community input, you're concerned that we don't violate any regulations, and the question about changing the agenda, the time for the meeting, we need to check whether everybody is able to get there at that time. Okay, thank you. Jim?
I have a few things I'd like to see us to talk about for next week, and give some, possibly get some input from our community. One, I have a concern about the administration structure at the high school in regards to having a principal and only one assistant. Working there since '02, based on population, we used to have three assistants and one high school principal. That was when we had 2,000 kids. Now we're down to 1,500 kids, and right now, we're already staffed with one high school principal and one assistant. I know there are two deans, I know what they do, I've worked with both of those gentlemen, but that still doesn't make up for the fact that we need another assistant principal at the high school. And I'd like to see possibly next week that be on the agenda, that we move forward to advertise for the posting of another assistant principal at the high school. I have another, looking at our retirement notices, I see Marion Kornak...
Just a second, before you go further, so is this something we would talk about in executive session then?
Yeah, I mean, so, right.
Okay.
That's a personnel item that you're permitted to discuss in executive session. You don't have to. You can obviously make comments about it in public, but you're permitted to discuss that proposed in executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Along the same note too, I've seen that Marion Kornak had submitted her paper to retire. Had the pleasure of working her, she was a full-time special ed paraprofessional, very dedicated and a very good employee in the district also. But a concern too is our staffing, our paraprofessionals, full-time, part-time, our numbers. And I think it's something I would imagine probably as soon as I started to realize, it's probably something in executive session we'd be prepared to talk about, our status on our paraprofessionals, staffing, and the status of their contract. And get an update and see where we go, we can get that contract resolved as soon as possible and get our staffing numbers where they should be.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
And then also with the announced retirements of Mr. Keith and Mr. Karazi, the next week we would discuss is possibly getting an advertisement out to then start getting potential new hires to come in. We can start that interview process and get moving on that, 'cause a lot of things are gonna be happening very quickly here in these six months. By the time these two gentlemen retire, we'll be here pretty quick and pretty fast.
Well, I think he only has three months.
March for him, end of June for him, yes. It's gonna go fast, so we can get our continuation plan up and running and see what administration has in mind with, as we move forward.
So I wasn't sure if we're supposed to talk about that in executive session, but probably the details of it. But I think what I'd like to see in the agenda for next week is that we at least approve the positions, okay? And, you know, the fact that we are going to hire, and we may need, you know, do work on after the fact then on, you know, the job position descriptions, you know, I know you're doing like, what, 10 different jobs today?
Kind of nine on the end.
So, you know, we, I think we have to have some discussion over what, what are the job descriptions and how many positions are there?
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up, but that was, I thought that was an executive session after I got told the other one, so.
Would the description of the job descriptions be an executive session?
Sure, I mean, it's, it's within the scope of, of the personnel that you're gonna hire in the proposals, so we can discuss that in executive session.
Sounds good.
That's all I have, Pam.
So I wanted to bring up the Baldridge Award for Strategic Plan. I think we need to discuss that. I wanna set the standard extremely high, and just to give you a little information on it, here's a little description. The Malcolm Baldridge National Quality Award is an award established by the U.S. Congress in 1987 to raise awareness of quality management and recognize U.S. companies that have implemented successful quality management systems. The award is the nation's highest presidential honor for performance excellence. So what happens, and I'm still studying this, there will be, there can be an internal self-assessment of the district K through 12 to really evaluate the strengths and weaknesses. I don't know all the strengths and weaknesses of the district, so I would like to be well-informed of what is happening across the entire district. So I think that we should discuss, this is a possible avenue to look at, and this would help with strategic planning, especially if you're talking about, let's say, emotional support or mental health. Now, where are we with that? Are we strong? Are we weak? So I think having a self, internal assessment will allow us to really know what we're great at and where there may be areas of concern. Oh, and by the way, the number of schools, it's around 15, since 1987, only about 15 schools have earned that, right around there, give or take a couple of schools, and there's not one in Pennsylvania. So, you know, Upper St. Clair and Mount Lebanon, they would dream to have this. I say we shoot for it, we go for it, we become the best. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we move to public comments and then board comments? Okay, are there any public comments at this time?
Pam, I'm gonna have to hang up.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna have to check back with you tomorrow if I can get something on, please.
Say that again, say that again.
I said I'll check back with you tomorrow, if I can get time, please, okay?
Okay. Thank you for serving, Connie, Connie is serving Steel Centers representative at their convention in California at this time. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, we're looking at the original, no.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. Sure. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Tom Adernik, 5460 Glen Hill Drive, just wanna say thank you for all that you guys have done to get here. Just wanna speak, try to speak positively tonight. I wish you the best of luck, I know that the community is behind you. I'm there to help you if you need anything, you guys have my number. I think talking to the community is a really great idea, but I think talking to the staff, being a school teacher myself, I would suggest, and I know maybe some people believe you keep the community and staff together so they can talk. I think talk to the staff separately, and if you can do that in a way where they can speak openly and honestly with you, you're gonna hear some really good stuff and probably unfortunately some bad stuff. And Pam and the other teachers probably understand what I'm saying. So, reach out to them. I, I know several teachers, and they really are looking forward to this breadth of change and, and potential that you guys are bringing. So if they're waiting, please talk to them. And again, thank you.
Ken Crowley, 2020 Millennium Court, just congratulations to all the new board members. I know you guys have worked hard to get here. I'm gonna look forward to the excellence you continue to instill in this community. And just a suggestion to the board, as you look for new solutions for the agenda and for Mr. Ryer to maybe look at is Board Docs. It's a program that's used by countless districts across the state, would make AgendaViewing very easy for you guys as well as the community. There's obviously a cost to it, but I think maybe in the long run, the cost might be, be beneficial, especially when you look and see how many neighboring districts actually use a program and how archaic pretty much our agenda process probably here is in Bethel Park. Thank you.
Before we move forward, Mr. Ryer, could you look into that for us and come back with some information for us about it? I know, I think you have before.
I have.
And it was, it was not viewed as positive, but if you could do it again for us, we would appreciate that.
I'd, I'd be delighted to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Four, four years ago, we were, or three and a half years ago, we were migrating from stacks of papers that sticked being delivered to our house every Friday.
Every Friday, that's right.
One step at a time, right? But yeah, that sounds, that sounds like a good, a good solution.
Please, yes, thank you.
Hi, Sandy Blackmore, 3540 Valley Drive. Once again, congratulations and welcome aboard, everybody. I'm glad that you're gonna kind of address the agenda slash comment sections. The unfortunate thing is we are all like little dogs waiting for Vicky to put that paper out there, and then before you know it, I'm looking at this and it's like, okay, time for the Pledge of Legions. And wait a minute, I didn't even get to see the agenda. I kinda like the idea... I kind of like the idea, if we're able to talk about each committee before each committee. That way, like you said, if I don't have anything about the finance committee, I'm not going to come up and say something for committees before the finance committee. So welcome aboard, guys.
Before you leave the microphone, do you like the idea of the consent agenda also?
I do. I actually wrote that note down too.
Okay.
I understand that the agenda is a fluid document. I understand. But just for even today's example, our agenda is blank for the money part of your track.
So was ours.
But I mean, you could have put, okay, wrong choice today.
But we did have a separate piece of paper explaining it all to us.
Yes, so even if our agenda had option A and option B, at least the audience would have been like, wait a minute, we're going from 200,000 to this amount? And then you, once we get the discussion, it would have just been A, all right, we're going to go with option A. Like, at least it would have given us a little more information also, instead of us coming in here and listening for the first time also.
Thank you.
Gus Oakley, 329 Allen Dell Drive. Out of the corner, like a chairmanship, center stage, well deserved, and I know you'll do well. To the board. Get the contract with a pair of professionals, they deserve it. This is bull what you've done, people have put up with. And they do a lot for this school district. Do good. Congratulations, so I don't have to come back.
Sharon Janasik, 4314 Anna Street. I will be coming back. Sorry. Congratulations, welcome. Happy to have you here. I love the general board discussion topic. Thank you. That's awesome. I appreciate hearing all of your ideas. I do, I feel conflicted about the agenda proposals, largely because I like the consent agenda aspect. But as we were talking and just brought up, we get the full information on what's on the agenda so late that actually, while I don't necessarily need to see the good news, I use that time to read the agenda so that by the time public comment comes, I know if I have one or not. I also like making comments before each section. But it would be hard to do both, because that's kind of what we do now. So I would just, as you're considering it, if you could make sure that there's some way that people coming to the meeting have enough information about what's on the agenda in order to know.
Well, if it's going to be electronic, I think that that's the goal, is that you have it ahead of time.
A lot of times we don't, like, we'll get, like, personnel, nine, nine people resigning. But with no idea until we actually get the paper here, whether we should be concerned about it or not.
Well, yeah, understood.
Which is going to be a hard balance. But I love the 360 survey, and seriously, the increased PSBA membership is less than $2,000 to bump it up?
I believe, I believe my memory serves.
We'll have to check, but I think that is an awesome idea, because education is good for everyone. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Public comments? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up for board comments then. If you'd like to say anything about being elected or whatever you want to say, we'll start at this side. So at this time.
So I'd like to thank the community for supporting everybody that got elected. You know, I'm going to keep this simple, but in the morning, when I wake up, I have three little boys, and it's probably about 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, education begins right away in my household. When to say please, when to say thank you, when to say you're welcome. And once we get settled in, we have breakfast, we will play blocks and choo-choo trains, then dad's off to work. So when dad goes off to work, I reach Mount Lebanon, I teach there. And I am teaching 100 kids every year prep on my roster, give or take. And it's an amazing feeling. I love my job. It brings me such happiness and fulfillment. And that now, being here on the board, it's overwhelming to know that I take care of 100 kids a year, obviously my own children, educating every day. And now I'll be able to help approximately 4,500 kids. I'm really pumped up for this. I cannot wait. It gives me chills, because to take care of 100 kids a year and to bring that number up to 4,500, I just can't believe that. I've been in education for 17 years, and it, and it does, it just gives me chills. I'm so happy to do it, so. Thank you.
Again, like Vince, thank you for everyone for your support and coming out in the two elections and giving us the opportunity. It is a great task. We all get in this for the right reason, and we try to do our best as we see it. I'm just hoping to work with all the staff, the community, students, our fellow board members and administration to do everything we possibly can to make our school district the best it possibly can be. So I'm looking forward to it, excited about it, and can't wait to get going. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Barry?
Yeah, so I'd like to say also thank you. Thank you, everybody who supported us through the elections. And I'd also like to thank everybody for, you know, the community in general of being more engaged in this process. When I ran four years ago, I was the fourth, the fourth person of five spots open, meaning that we couldn't even fill up an entire slate for the primary. And, you know, this election, there was, you know, a lot of emotions, a lot of different, you know, viewpoints. But there was a tremendous amount, I would say in order of magnitude, more engagement across the community and candidates. And that's important. We need to continue that, you know, whether you agree, disagree, or whatever. It's important that everybody stays engaged. And that's what was exciting for me. It was, it was, you know, a lot more work this time, it was a lot more, well, exciting. But it was, it was worth it. It's worth it to see everybody engaged across the community and everybody's able to have choices. And I think that's really important. I think it's, it's, it's better for the district overall. So thank you for all, for being engaged.
Again, I need to thank the community for both elections. I hope that you continue to stay engaged, you have all of our emails, you have all of our contact information. Please, that's what we're looking for. That's part of the reason I've asked for the 360 survey. That's part of the reason I've asked for teacher input, for administration input, for community input. You know, as a graduate of this school system in 1993, earlier, I sat over where it says student government years ago and watched this process, yes, Dr. Oakley, watched this process as he sat up here. And to be sitting here tonight and come full circle, coming, bringing my family to Bethel Park in 2010 and saying this is where we want to raise our kids, to make an impact, has been amazing. There are several people I need to thank tonight, because I couldn't do this without my four running mates and my parents, my daughter and my son, and my husband, who have all supported me through all of this. My brother is even here tonight, I think he has Jack Judy, to say thank you, because this, the next four years is going to involve all of us. So thank you very much, and I look forward to serving them.
I want to congratulate the new board members as well as Barry. Thank the community for staying engaged. I'm happy to see the change. I said from the beginning of this process, I think we need, I thought we needed change. It was up to the community to decide what that change looked like. As the process narrowed down, I, there were only five candidates for change, so I supported them, and they're up here right now. As I support people up or down the ballot, put my name and integrity on the line, I feel once that election's over, the campaign's over, now it's my job to hold them accountable. I made a pledge to the people of Bethel Park that I always keep the kids first and foremost in every decision I make, and I intend to keep that promise. I will fight hard for the kids with, with anybody who shares that vision and those views, and I'll fight hard against anybody who stands against that vision or those views. I intend to keep my promise and my pledge. And, you know, as I expect all you to hold me accountable, I will hold everybody I support accountable also. So congratulations, campaign's over, work starts now.
Let's get to work.
Let's get moving.
A lot of work. If my list is Joseph, if this list I have created tonight.
You know, I agree with everyone up here, you know, the community, thank you. This process started for me 28 months ago as a result of personnel move that did not make sense for those kids at the time. And I agree with you, you have to fight for the kids. Every decision has to be, well, is it benefiting the kids? And so, and our, you know, again, you know, my wife with the twins at home, and actually, she's shuttling back and forth to the West End for Pittsburgh Musical Theater tonight. That's why they couldn't be here. But I'd like to thank her as well, and my twins. Unauthorized soliciting support during Halloween, you know? So trick or treat, my dad is running, you know? So I look forward to making sure that their educations are going to be just as fulfilling as my older two's educations. Some of you here know my daughter Ellie, who's autistic, wonderful kid, and my oldest daughter graduated from here. And she was actually in the first class that graduated from the new building. And so, you know, they spoke nothing but positivity about this district way back then. And I want to make sure all these kids that are going to start graduating, moving through our system, are going to have those same comments. Thank you.
And I would like to thank everybody and thank the board for their support in my role as president and look forward to working with everyone in a collaborative manner in the future. And at this time, I'd like to say that we're going to recess to, we're going to adjourn, and then we're going to go to executive session. So I'd like to have a...
Russ, still on? Real quick, yeah, Russ, is he still on?
Russ, are you still on? Okay, we're going, we're going, we're going, we're... Go ahead, you want to make a comment? Okay, thank you. Mr. Karazi, he just congratulated you for your service, if you didn't hear him. So we're going to go back to executive session, but I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you all.